Funny. Good thing we got a quorum. It'll be a quick meeting, I guarantee.
Well, that was kind of why I stopped by to go, hey, I might be running behind.
Yeah, well, we wouldn't be able to start until you got here then.
Six o'clock, I'll call the meeting order. Christina, you have the roll?
Yep.
I will dispense with the pledge of allegiance. Unless someone had an objection.
Um, through this evening's agenda.
Thank you, sir.
Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Alright.
I opposed. Right now, most carries. Old business, let's service lines.
Yeah, so, um, uh, Witsa sent us our end list from the October twenty-seventh um, completion. We had a total of three lines that were considered galvanized that would would definitely need replacement. Um, um, I gave you guys the listing just so that you had an idea where the proximity was. And then we had eighty-three of them that were unknowns. Um, and what that meant was, even though somebody may have taken a picture of what was on the inside of their home, there's not enough data for us to know what's from inside the home out to the main. So if we don't have that data or whatever photos or inventory from the inside was unclear, either one of those, if that was still an unknown, then that person got an unknown letter. Um, most of them were like that. There was four entities that have had their service line updated when we did our two thousand seventeen improvement on Main Street and Summit. Um, the, there's a couple of them that I I question if maybe we just didn't get a really good photo or not, like Cherry Brands, she's pretty consistent with keeping her stuff updated, but she was on the list. Um, and then there was Finney's, theirs were done, they're on Main Street, and then Towns Edge Estates, which is a whole category of conversation that we're not really sure how that'll handle because we, they own everything from the main to the curb stop and for Towns Edge from the curb stop all the way to their units. We don't have any record of what those units.
The city paid for that stuff for Home Network.
Say again, please?
The city paid for that stuff or?
Uh, the city, when we did our two thousand seventeen infrastructure change, we got PFA and small cities money for water and sewer, so both service lines were upgraded.
That was part of the project?
That was part of that project.
Well, we could have that as documentation.
Yep. But those were the only three or four of them that I I knew the service line to, the curb stop was done, but from, and I'm pretty sure from curb stop into the house was not. I'll have to double check my data.
So Towns Edge, the trailer court has?
They have a new service line to their meter.
To that.
Yeah, but everything inside the property are all privately owned service lines.
So, yeah, nobody has any real?
No one has, no, no. I doubt that even the current owner who bought it in two thousand fifteen probably has any concept of what it is.
That was built in the early seventies, wasn't it?
That's what I understand, and part of it, like the north side was supposed to be like an RV area too, so there's a lot of infrastructure up there that is just like not even winterized or deep enough to utilize.
Yeah. So they probably were using copper seventies. I know when I hooked up mine in the nineties, when I had a trailer there, it was all line coming out.
Yeah.
Could've been plastic, but that was a new thing when I was a kid.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't even know. I mean, Tim and I had a big conversation about that last week when I was trying to get this letter out about how that how the city would even handle that. Because if we do get the funding to help offset this, I would say that's going to be the biggest problem is that.
Because you're not dealing with the individual homeowner necessarily because they don't.
And I think that's just one aspect of it. But if it wasn't, if we look at it as if it was an apartment building, it would be relatively the same way. It's just it would be interior instead of out of the, under the ground. But it, um, anyway, to any extent, we also, um.
So it's gonna be another topic for, or it'll be a topic for another time, or?
Yeah, because we don't know how to answer that one.
We don't know how the funding is gonna work.
Funding available for this.
Right.
Over on the project priority list.
We are, so we just gotta wait and see how that side ends up funding it, and that's what I'm telling anybody that's calling in just to have questions is, yes, there will be funding because this was stemmed, stopped at the federal level. We don't know what that funding's gonna look like, but yes, there will be some.
And supposedly, there's going to be another round with the service lines, because for the unknowns, as we understand, the next round will probably be potholing, trying to figure out what's in the city right of ways, because that's where you're probably going to see a lot of the unknowns are, just because there's not adequate records or
Right.
information available that meets the criteria for them to determine this material. So we'll see where that goes. We don't know.
Yeah, yeah. But we also, um, modified the MDH letters so that, um, the language was more tailored to the ownership responsibility. Um, that way, there wasn't a ton of confusion, but I'm sure we'll still have questions about, you know, when is this gonna happen and what is it gonna cost me? But, um, that's done, and I sent the certification letter out. So took me a couple of tries. Well, the email I had for MDH kept on popping up with misspelled, and then I couldn't get my Outlook to. I've had all sorts of problems with Outlook in the last three months. Anyway, oh, yeah. That's where we sit with that.
One of the wellhead protection.
So I made the, um, implementation grant deadline of, uh, November eighteenth with Duncan's assistance and applied for fourteen thousand dollars worth of grants um, to, uh, take care of four action items on the wellhead protection plan. Um, the largest of the four is, um, uh, constructing a fence around well eight that was estimated at ten thousand dollars. Um, the other ones are predominantly administrative. Um, one of them is bringing knowledge into the schools. Um, the other is updating and partnering our, our land use ordinance with, um, uh, the wellhead protection plan, making that together. Uh, and then the other one was additional education. I think that one was public. A little sample for what I printed doesn't give me all my details, but I don't know when this actually gets announced. I didn't get that far last week. Do you know when they get awarded?
And was a fence on there for them, well?
Yep, yep. That was the biggest of the four.
No. No, I could find out.
Okay, um, either way, if and when those get, um, approved, then we can utilize that fun funding to do those, um, uh, initiatives. I also sent out notification to all the local government units that were required, and it also got out to Department of Health, so those boxes are checked as well.
Yeah.
Any questions on that? Well, hey. Lift stations.
So I don't have any more movement on this. Um, where we left it off last was we need to partner to put together a specific list of what we want and our needs so that we can go forward with bids, but we also agreed at the last work session that we had time because this is obviously not a winter project. So I've kind of put this on the back burner until I can get to having more time, but we also were thinking we needed another quote, but in the last we spoke, we wanted to actually go out for bids and list what we want specifically, so at some point, I'll partner with Tim and his team to make sure that that's listed and then it's publicized correctly.
Yeah, we'll have to post the bids based on that. I think you were gonna do a little bit of affordability background of whether you're gonna do the three hundred or the eight hundred? Or if it's clear that you're gonna do the three hundred? Because that'll help me arrow that down a little bit.
Right, right. Looking at my notes from the last meeting.
Then you're right, we do have time.
Yeah, we have the time, but again, what I stressed at the last meeting and my biggest concern is, is like you said, the affordability of, you know, a ten-year note with eight hundred grand.
Because it's not gonna.
If that's just not gonna fly, despite, despite the need, it's, it's.
And that's what we, I thought we had pretty much agreed upon was the three hundred was the
about the only option. Because.
Yeah, that's probably true, isn't it? Yeah.
Yeah, and we should go forward and not wait for failure.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Yep, yep. So on an affordability standpoint, yeah, I think staying with the two fifty is, two fifty to three hundred is actually safer.
It might not be exactly how we want it. Uh, you know, it's not a perfect world, but it's not a perfect world, so. Do what you can. Well, and talk about the library?
I do.
Seems like there's quite a bit of stuff on the library.
Yeah, so, um, Kelly and I have been working with this company. Um, it is a Minnesota company that does, um, trying to align this, I can't.
Creative spaces.
Yeah, so we outsourced some help from them because what we want to do is we really want to improve the racking
Yes.
in the library. We knew we needed some FFNE, some tables, um, some chairs, the table and chairs for the multipurpose room and so on, but Kelly's really got her heart set on getting some shelving, and I think on an affordability standpoint, I think we can do that. I started punching in a budget today because the Department of Education grant is reimbursing the city for the, some, some of the construction stuff that, uh, uh, GHI is doing, so I think that's gonna offset a lot of the costs. Um, but this is, this is kind of an idea right now, conceptually, of what we're thinking we would do. Um, the kids' area would still stay in that east side, but we would get these low rackings that are perfectly ideal for large picture books and, uh, that high of a child, that tall of a person. Um, the rest of them improves, um, obviously that door's not gonna turn into glass, so to disregard that, but we also wanted, um, better use of how we display and rent out the DVDs, and then having that racking be lower in the center gives a better sightline to, um, across the across the whole, um, building.
That's a security thing.
I think it's a security thing as well. Um, our first concept that we got from this company gave us a ton of seating. Um, and we had to go back to the drawing board. That was due in part to, um, the company wanted to know how much circulation we had, and what we gave them was like half of what we could normally have in the building. So there was lots of seating, lots of table space, which we didn't need. So as you're looking at this, um, video, as you enter the building, you'll see there's seating and tables, so that's where the tech is being relocated to. It's already been pulled with wire and it's ready to go. Um, and then we'd have a seating area for guests, and then the rest of it would be all periodicals. And of course, the circulation area is gonna be behind that new counter as you first walk into the north. Um.
First card catalog.
It's all on the computer. Um, we want to get a new, we need to get a new book return. You'll see that that's over by the, the main entrance. Um, it, it's pretty affordable. The racking itself, the main racking is what's the most expensive. The first quote with this um, amount of volume is fifty-three thousand dollars. So I'm really hoping, well, and if you've been in the library before, so you see everything that's in there is just two by four screwed together, right? So all of this is adjustable. It's steel, so it, it will last, and it's gonna look like a library. Um, I have made some quotes just looking and shopping myself for furniture for like seating and tables and everything, and a lot of what this company is doing is going off of a lot of the same, uh, websites that we are, except for their racking for their, or their shelving for their books. So as I get closer to this, I'll be able to give you guys a solid. Kelly just, I mean, we literally got it this afternoon, but Kelly hasn't seen it yet either. To know if that particular layout will work, um.
So what did the, the creative spaces, there was a charge for that?
Right now, no, there's no charge for them to do this concept, concept. Basically, we would be going through them to ordering everything. If that is the case, there's no fee to make this concept. Um, we had to get them all the measurements of the building, where things are located, um, have a couple of uh, Zoom calls with them so they understand what our needs are, talk about colors, all that kind of stuff. Um, and, you know, besides the periodicals, so they know what this is. If, um, if it works out and we place this order and it's within our budget to do this, it's a fourteen to twenty-week timeframe to get. So despite having to do the initial moves right now to put carpeting in, which is supposed to start this Friday, it will take until probably March before we actually get this furniture. So we may have the hard shell of the, of the library renovated, but still have antiquated book shelving. Um, once the carpet is installed, we'll get rid of that existing circulation desk and we'll, uh, move them all over to the new area. So I've ordered desks for the circulation area already. That is not included in this, and the cabinetry and the counters that are gonna go there will house, um, the copier and their computers and the fax machine and all their DVDs that they rent, like the actual units themselves. And they'll like drastically downsize that circulation area at that point. My hope is that within the budget that we have between the local option sales tax, Kitchy's money, and, um, the Department of Education grant, that once the in, inside is done, we'll be able to finish out some of the outside. I would like to order them a new book, um, drop, exterior book drop. That metal one outside is really old and, and it's pretty banged up. Um, Mike would like to remove some of the grass in the front area, either cement or rock it, so it's more permanent, so there's less worry about snow in that area. And we really would like to update and bring the patio back in the east rear of the building. Help some water issues with the neighbors so that we don't have any future issues around the building as well. Um, the other thing that I did was I contracted with Pinnacle, and I have asked them to develop a new logo design for our library um, so that we can order new signage that we can mount to the exterior of the building, get rid of what's already there. This is just taking up green space and it isn't even on our property. So this is, you know.
But it's, it's time.
It's, it's time, yep, and, um, yeah, I would go with, um, the same company that has done the ones for the golf course and the one out here at the intersection, when we're done. Yep. The last thing I need to talk to you guys about that I need, kind of like a, like a go ahead, please go ahead. Um, in the two thousand twenty-five library budget, we levied seven thousand dollars to replace the door. Have received a quote from Clarity Glass to replace that door. Um, that installation cost and price is seventy-seven sixty-three. What that will do is it'll flip the opening the opposite direction, so it is the right way for ADA. If, um, I get my wish, you guys will say yes to the ADA operator too. That's another thirty-six fifty. So it is beyond what we've levied for, but I can utilize the money that we already have in the local option sales tax to pay for it. Um, if you guys are good with this, Clarity can still install it this year.
So with the local option sales tax, we, we have a maximum amount we can divert to the library based on the ballot, right?
The local option sales tax money can only be put to the la, library.
Right, but there's a fixed dollar.
That is correct, yep, yep. It was a hundred grand less the admin costs to the state, yep.
And then we also have a grant that we're using to apply.
Correct.
Or and then we levied seven thousand for this, so.
Right, plus the fifty, plus the fifty-seven we got from Kitchy.
Okay.
Yeah.
So are we still thinking of keeping our expenses within the totals of all that?
Hundred percent, yeah.
So doing the optional door opener would not put us over?
No, and I feel like doing this was already a need. We knew last year despite what the new funding that got approved happened. Um, the only thing that I would probably scale back if everything else ended up being, um, too much money is I'd probably try to scale back the racking that I showed you guys before, make a final, um, suggestion for approval on that, if there's any way to dwindle down that price.
Because the, the furniture bill is like seven or seventy thousand or something.
Yeah, if you look at all of that, it's like seventy grand.
So are we thinking of doing all of that and still coming in on the budgets or?
I don't know yet.
No.
Yeah.
Could friends of the library, their funding, could they?
They can absolutely kick my, kick money into that.
So that's something to ask, ask them for.
Um.
I would have no problem saying, hey, let's put in the the right door and get it done.
I think the door has to be done despite, um, the rest of the remodel.
And, uh, you know, and if you and if you're thinking of coming down on the, you know, trying to reduce price for the racking, then that's where they can kick in a little bit on the back end, and everybody gets to say, we helped you that.
Yeah, um, I I, I figured after we saw the admin costs for the local option sales tax, we probably are gonna get like eighty-five out of that hundred. That's ours.
I see, yeah.
Um, obviously, the grant from Department of Education is two hundred. I really don't see us, me being able to manipulate everything out of that grant, because the majority of that grant is for construction. And I just don't see my construction costs being a hundred and fifty thousand dollars that I can use. You know?
Just, just saying.
So I submitted my first reimbursement to the state for the grant for this, uh, last payment we made to, uh, GHI, the fourteen-five, and Bussler's bill. They haven't denied it, but I haven't seen it approved yet. If that comes back, then that's twenty-one grand right there. That's back in our, back in our budget.
Yeah.
That we already paid for out of our own money because the grant would cover it. So if that works well, I'll continue doing that because above and beyond what, uh, Tony Gustafson has quoted us to do the original remodel does not include all carpet, all painting. So I don't have the cost on that. That's above and beyond what his original bid was for us because he was only gonna carpet and floor that section he was gonna renovate. And then we got the grant, so I'm like, well, we're gonna go all the way through. So he still has to pay polar for doing the entryway and the bathroom. He still has to pay for installation and the carpetman, the labor and the materials for carpeting and his labor and materials for the painting. So I, that is kind of an unknown number for me right now. That's why, as much as I love the racking, it's gonna be the last thing where I can say yes to within, you know, and still stay, keep us under budget. But to Ron's point, the whole plan is to stay in budget and not exceed anything. If we have to make something else work, then we'll do that.
Until we get economically redeveloped with all of these new business opportunities.
Right.
We need to be good stewards of the tax base.
Hundred percent. I would like to do the, the door, though. Um.
I think that that's a, that's a, yeah, yeah. What I was told is that there's a big problem with the existing door doesn't fit right. It's crappy and, and it's bad to begin with, and just having an ADA opener would make it all the better.
It would, yeah.
Accessible to everybody.
Yeah.
And.
And the right openings.
Right, man, everywhere you go, there's a door for ADA, so.
Yes.
Why you'd wanna do it not now, because if it's thirty-six hundred added now, it's gonna be fifty-six hundred added after the fact.
Yeah.
If you do it after, mark, you know, after the door is installed. And we're also gonna have some utility savings by having a door that doesn't big bear, which is, I understand now, there's big gaps in them.
Yeah, um, Clarity came in last fall and they put a different hinge and readjusted the hinges on them, so it wasn't gapped as bad, um, because we were having problems locking the door. But now that that's done, it's a little bit better, but it's still, it's, it's past its age.
And they still wanna tackle it this year?
I cleared it with John. He said they could still do it.
Then get it in.
Yep, um, what I will be doing, and you guys will see it on December eighth on the fund balance report, is I'm gonna take that seven thousand dollars that has been levied in the, um, the general funds library budget and move it into the library project fund at five fifty, so it's there, just in case the timing of the invoice from Clarity comes out late. And then all the money will be in that pot of money instead. I'm just trying to make sure that anything that's, um, depreciated or, uh, things that we have to move money is done in twenty-five before the end of the year.
Okay.
Cool.
Cool. Good doc.
Um, I had a visit from my partners at Blandon, uh, last week. Um, as you know, Blandon gave us ten thousand dollars for this project for the old duck and the lion's duck. And we've been kicking our project can down the road so long that I completely forgot that it actually had an expiration date on when the grant completion project had to be done was twenty-five. So they're giving us a one-year extension to the end of twenty-six to utilize the funding. I know we haven't used it all. Um, I don't have the exact amount because I haven't had a chance to really pencil it out, but I did, my partners at Blandon do know that the project is kind of on hold for a couple of different reasons, and they understand the whys. Um, we're just trying to do it within the budget that we have. So they've provided us an extension, um, to the use of the money, but we kind of need to keep moving forward on this and not pausing.
So how far have we come with the goal of that?
Well, the project in, under Blandon's understanding, the way I applied for the money was for both statues. Well, the project in, under Blandon's understanding, the way I applied for the money was for both statues. So for the old duck. We have to consider what we're going to utilize the money for, we know we have to make a sur- a surround for it to keep it safe. And that may or may not be a cost to us, it might be in kind, it might be a project to the kids at the school. It's the lion's duck, we have no real good idea about a cost level on. Because we haven't been able to really nail down what we're gonna do to it, who's gonna do it, and what it's gonna cost us. The statue itself at the old duck is, is sound as much as we can make it, we just need to finish off the area. And the grant application included that, so.
Not would that include a canopy built over it or not?
Yeah.
Like a.
Yeah, cuz.
Fence it, fence it off or picket fence or.
Pick it off, picket fence it off, or, or do the, the, you know, have the kids put a um. Pavilion or something over it, yes, that wouldn't, that could be included on there, that was all parts of. Keeping and restoring and for um preserving the statue. So despite, despite the parameters of the grant, yes, money can be used for that. Um, what I painted the picture to um in the grant was that. The whole corner needed a facelift, including the, the ground.
Okay, and you've been in touch then with the fire department, I assume, everybody's working towards the same goal on that.
Yeah. Yeah, so on the lion's duck, um. It's my understanding that the lions are interested in helping out with us.
Yes.
Financially, work wise. Contracting somebody to do it, what, what kind of a conversation did you have?
That they were, uh, Bruce gave me the impression that he, the lions wanted to take over and just, they're gonna fix the duck. And I, that's a preliminary conversation, it was in passing pretty quickly, you know, but I do plan on attending. They have a December meeting coming up, I will attend that and find out. What exactly they wanna do with the duck. And it was under all of our. Assumption that the lions don't need the duck, here city, you have the duck.
Kinda like a street. Here we made you a street, here's the street.
Or a walking path, or a. So that, that was my understanding, is that this was gonna fall on us, but if they are willing to undertake the project. I would say. Let them roll with it.
Do they understand the economics involved, the price tag? Cause the base thing is gonna cost some money, I think, too.
So they have their, yeah, they may think we're gonna take repaint the statue and that's it, but what it sits on is the big money. I agree. But there's only one way for them to know, and that's.
Yeah.
Someone tell them.
Sure. Well, when, when is that meeting?
December second.
Okay, I'll. Try to get you some updated numbers by then. As to how much of that grant, if they needed funding, economic funding for that.
What would be?
What could the city put in for it?
The lion's shit, what would be the wayside rest duck, the lion's duck chair.
Sure.
That funding that we have collected. That would give them a, a jumping off point, and. We have one less. Cause if they would like to get busy and do their fundraisers, then do the. I don't, I'm not entirely sure how the Lions organization works. So I've got some questions for them too.
Cool, well, it's nice to have another organization that's actually interested, maybe we'll get some more resources and some networking out of it. That's all I have for that.
Future city hall plans.
I left this on the agenda because you guys told me to, but.
That wall one color. That was, that was someone's suggestion to me.
The exterior?
Yes.
Demolition remnant.
And, and at least make it one color.
I think that's a great suggestion, the only thing I'm fearful about touching that is because the masonry behind it, I don't know how fragile it is. And once you start picking, you might. A bigger problem.
I don't think they intended anybody picking or anything, I think it's take the Wagner power sprayer and make it all one universe, one. Uniform color. Yeah, that's it, and then. Go from there.
Well, if I could make a suggestion, since, you know. Nick wanted to leave this on the agenda as well. Uh, can we form uh just a committee for city hall? And start having some periodical brainstorming meetings about what we're gonna do at this building.
It could be a good starting point, at least. Come up with some ideas and. Stuff to at least start off with the plan, rather than just leaving it on and just keep. Kickin', kicking it down the road, yeah.
Okay.
Who's doing architecture in your department now? Anybody?
Well, Jamie Beazer is the one that did the feasibility study, I don't know if it would be.
Well, I can tell you, it's not gonna be in the next year.
But if you would like somebody to participate in the brainstorming.
So if we could get somebody with a Wagner to take care of the wall, I think that's a non-expensive, how much could it cost to do that? Yeah, on the paint. Might take a little more than gallon, but.
I think it's gonna take more than paint, because there's fabric on that building wall and foam.
Wall is not good. It's a mismatch of stuff.
Well, particularly because that's the wall of another building, that's not a wall, this building, I'm surprised they didn't take that down.
No, that's actually part of this building.
The old uh once over dust, place over rust kind of things.
Everything will see maybe better hanging something over that sidewall. Should have a big license plate on that.
There you go.
That sounds a lot more expensive than it's gonna pay him.
It could very well be uh.
So we get more business, more people notice.
Oh, we get business, trust me, every day I have at least four, four to six people that wanna come in and renew their driver's license.
I heard, uh, speaking of that, the gamble is for Miss Pa is starting to be done now.
And I don't know if they're starting or if they already did it and just added on, because they did an expansion to their building specifically for it. Which they would have regardless, because it needs to be a separate secured area.
Yeah, I see, they never, they never renewed licenses.
Okay, so then they, they did that on top of what they're already doing. She gonna be busy.
Yeah.
She's gonna be busy.
Why would I wanna go into the midge and do it? I wouldn't have to.
There are people from Bemidji coming here to do their title transfers.
I told you when this started, a driver's license?
No, their title transfers and their tabernacles, because they don't wanna go to, they don't wanna go to the county building at all.
Well, I drove to. Miss Pa, I don't know how many times, because I didn't wanna go to Bemidji.
Pretty much run, anybody that lives down. Birchmont, Old Bemidji Avenue. Before you get to. Boy, just south of Turtle River, and then on the Pennington side down the scenic. Are all coming here, we have an enormous amount of traffic from the Squaw Lake area. Worked. Kelly or Washkes.
Yeah, I ask, cause I haven't. Get a title transfer, I moved here in twenty twenty one, and I thought the county building was fine.
They are, but I think. Okay, so the funny story about it is, we always, we always joke, because there was like, oh, nobody wants to deal with the people that work in the admin building. And it's like, okay, well, they have, probably have to put up with a lot of stuff. And myself and Paige put up with the same stuff. And it, it really will change you. At a certain point in a customer service role, depending on who you are servicing. Some people are great to work with, some people are not.
So you already write yourself up then?
Holding my tongue, holding my tongue, Max. Yep, yep, just grin and just smile and wave. Yeah, no, I mean, it's, it's not an easy business, um. You know, it. It, when you, when you come out of the school of thought where, okay, I need. I, I have to renew my tabs, I know as a citizen of Minnesota, I have to provide my insurance. Fifty percent of, to sixty percent of the people don't do that, or they don't know they have to. Um, on a title transfer, there's a fairly large area on a title that needs to be filled out in order to transfer it. There's, I get a lot of, um, a lot of people that come in, they don't wear their glasses, they want you to fill it out. Um, it's a lot of, it's a lot of handholding. Um, and I don't, I don't sit in that school of thought where if you want this, this is, this is the game you're playing. Um, and I'm sure that that's turned some people probably down in the. Bemidji area negatively, because it's like, well, what do you mean you won't help me, it's like, well, this is your request, not mine.
There's a bunch of folks that I know. That if I said one. There was one particular person down at Bemidji, and you go, oh yeah, I don't wanna deal with that.
Yeah, yeah, but I mean, it's, it's the same in a lot of different service industries too, as soon as you do more than what you're required to do. That's the expectation, and then all of a sudden, you're doing more than what you're truly getting paid for. So you gotta know where the good balances, and some people. Uh, some people can't read very well. Or at all. So you, you do the best to help them, but yeah, I think a lot of the people that we're getting repeat customers wise, it's. They don't really understand the ins and outs of, you know, owning a vehicle, transferring it, what it requires to have registration and plates. Um, and we're doing a lot of teaching to some people too, so. Yeah, we're just nicer up here. That's all.
Okay.
Yeah.
Always pleasant when I do my path too.
Yeah, that's always been good for me too.
Wish I had more to bring in.
But anyway, getting back to the future plans thing, yes, I, I would love anybody that, I mean, obviously I can't have the whole council on it, but it would be nice to have. One to two people and, you know, maybe somebody from Woodset, myself. I don't know, maybe even if I can find an engaged citizen that's worth, that resident that's worth, you know. Putting some stock into it, I wouldn't, I would encourage that as well.
We could even set it up to the teams.
I could do a teams meeting, yeah, yeah, that way it, it isn't a requirement to have to like be physically here. So, um.
Okay.
Welcome to your feedback, but that's pretty much my, my position.
Did you have a, did you have a particular citizen in mind, or are you looking for?
I don't, I'm just throwing things over, seeing what'll stick, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it could be a business owner. It could be somebody from our planning commission. Yeah, maybe somebody, I'll figure something out.
You said lottery winner?
Not a lot, not much time, lots of time on their hands. Yeah.
Uh, okay.
Okay. Nick, boom, done, thank you.
Our safety committee meeting, public safety.
So I have not been able to set that up yet, um. I think with, I think with hunting season, it's kind of put a kind of grip on everybody's schedules, so. Uh, I don't anticipate getting Riggs here to talk to with everybody until after the new year. It's because we don't have a December work session, and he would. He would be um more interested in coming during the work session originally. Um, I can tell you that there's been a lot of uh talk over in Bagley. Recently about this exact same thing, and they hadn't even talked to Clearwater County yet before they had the discussion at their meeting, so.
I spoke with the mayor.
Did you?
He's got some info for me next time.
Okay. So, yeah.
What information he has to pass along, but if there was a process they went through or.
Yeah, well, and they haven't even done anything, I think the way I understand it happened, and maybe he can clarify, you can confirm this or not, is. Their chief came to them. You know, the consideration of hiring a fourth full-time officer was, was discussed. The council at that point discussed possibly just getting rid of their department, um, because they still with even. Three and a half officers, they didn't have twenty four seven coverage. Um, and if that was something that they wanted to consider, and they had a motion to consider having a discussion more about it. They had not talked to Clearwater County yet, so they had no idea, so whoever was in public at that meeting had an issue with just that. Basic conversation, now, I'm not in the school of. At all doing anything like this until we've had a minimum of two, maybe even three public hearings.
Yeah, how does everyone feel about it?
Right, right.
It's not. I, I know I've always been. Well, definitely behind our law enforcement, having a local. Presence, it, it means a lot. So it's nothing that, I just wanted, but you know, it's not something we're taking like. Gonna jump the gun on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think having signage, police vehicles to say, like, to police department is helpful, I've actually overheard conversations at. Comedians are about that, like, police vehicles are, people are looking at. And they always engage with kids riding bikes around here, and that's my daughter's favorite thing, is when they get a free ice cream called. I was even on a scooter one time, and they pulled us over and gave the girls a, you know, a kid's scooter, and he's like, aren't you a little too big for that? I didn't get one, because I wasn't very able.
I know contrary to what. Everyone says on chit chat. There's quite a. You know, we need to stop the squealing tires and loud exhausts and Jake breaking and all the other. Good stuff that goes along with it, the speeding. And there's just no. I, I don't know how you. I don't know how many tickets everybody wants to ha- have handed out. And when I say everyone, I mean a few.
I think it's important to know from a general public standpoint, that it doesn't matter how many police officers law, or any law enforcement you have. On staff or in any department, crime still happens.
You are going to have a problem at some point, and it's, and it's gonna be irritating. And I sympathize with anyone that has, you know, that is being disturbed by. Loud tires or loud exhaust and. But it's also. Or suffering property damage by people rushing into their big beautiful fence.
Yeah. Yeah, it happens, and, and it's unfortunate, it's not gonna go away. It doesn't matter how many officers you have on staff.
Also know that. You know, uh, if you wanna look at, you know, flip the roles there, you can put yourself as the person committing the offense, I'm not. Waiting for the officer to be there when I'm doing it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Uh, you know, it.
And knowing, people knowing that we won't have a local police department anymore, is that gonna make it? Easier, or think they can get away with more?
I. I.
There was.
The people that are doing bad stuff are always gonna do bad stuff, Nick.
Yeah, but knowing the fact that we're not gonna have that anymore here, we're not gonna have that local presence is gonna be a little bit different, I can guarantee it.
But as of right now, we still have that.
Yeah. Yeah.
But if.
Until the end of the month. Sorry. Everybody knows.
Just, just try it there.
I mean, I, I get it. I mean.
I am against getting rid of our police department. And I will be the one that will both know if I'm the only one.
Fair enough.
Well, the last applicants that I, um, informed you that did come in were both, uh, not eligible.
No, I get that.
Yeah.
But. We'll have to see what, uh. What about turning me on, Charles?
Right. So as soon as I get that, um, formulated together, I'll let you guys know.
Yes.
Oh, I have one more bulk business thing. I just wanted to fill you guys in on if you don't mind.
Sure.
Um, the, uh, donation to the ice fishing derby. Uh, so Luke at the lumberyard is working on this for me right now. They don't have any resources to order just a couple of bikes. So this may not happen before the end of the year, just letting you know, but I'm told him I would rather keep the money in town if at all possible. Um, he said by the first of the year, it might be easier for him to order them. Instead of just one here and one there, there's just no resources for their vendors at this time to get one bike, one or just two bikes. So, um, I told him just, let's just revisit this after the holidays. If for some reason that still ends up being an issue for their entity, I will just order a couple. Myself from either Dunham's or a Target or something of that nature. But I'm just trying to keep the money in town.
And I think they should have every opportunity to have the money in town.
Yeah, so just wanting to let you guys know that, uh, that's gonna pend for a little bit.
Okay, well, yeah, it's not a, the ice isn't quite ready yet.
I don't know, last week it looked pretty good. Now it doesn't look good anymore.
Still a little, ice is a little runny. And Christina have, uh, resolution for us, huh?
So this is the fees and charges for twenty-six. Um. I don't have a whole lot on here that needs to be a change. Um, except for the water usage fee, which is mandated. Um, so that's item number forty-five on page two. Will go up to fifteen twenty-two annually. Um, I did already send out notices to all the connections. That there will be. It's a little confusing and I do apologize, but that's just because of when we pull it from everybody annually is September's invoice or September's building. Building, bleh, um. Some, some municipalities charge it. Uh, like a buck or two on every month and we do it in one lump sum. We pay the state connection fee quarterly to the state, so I just have to do a makeup. Um, for the two quarters that we're gonna be behind on, but otherwise, um. Things that I usually review at this point is like dog licenses, rental licensing. Um, land use permit charges. Uh, campsite rental. Um, costs, which I really don't see the need to in- increase either. Um. Our rental inspections, I haven't gotten my final contract from. Andy yet in regards to what they're, he's gonna charge, so there may or may not be a change to. Uh, item eighteen and nineteen. I'll have to follow up with him on that before the next meeting. But you guys will have this on the December eighth agenda for approval.
Anybody see anything that needs? Is the field needs adjusting on that or? No. Whatever Christina feels, she deals with assessment fees, so she thinks something's not covering our costs.
No, I mean.
Some of it is you. You know, again, if you do them, they don't, some of them, you gotta put a number on that, that's.
Yeah.
I mean, it should not be necessarily a profit center, but we should cover.
Exactly. No, I think we're good. I mean, one of the things that I've seen a huge increase on in terms of volume is the amount of notering, notarizing we're doing. Out of our office, um, there are incidences just with the, um. With the DMV where, uh. A surviving spouse, um, not subject to probate form needs to be, uh, signed and notarized and. Those specific transactions, because we're already getting a fee from the state, I'm not double charging the person for a notary. Um, but if somebody's just coming in and needing something notary, that notarized, it's a one-off, we're charging them that two dollars and it's really minimal, so minimal.
Two dollars?
That's it. Used to be a buck. I doubled the price.
Hundred percent markup, wow.
Yeah.
Is that, what, what is the typical notary fee? I guess I didn't.
I don't really know, so I think Deerwood doesn't do it if they do not have an account with them. They won't do it for anybody publicly, just unless they're a customer of Deerwood Bank.
Right, so that's. It's a service they provide to their customers.
Correct, and that's it. So I don't know anyone else in town that does notarizing except myself and Paige. Unless there's somebody independently that has one.
Just walking around.
You know, there are people that do it for a service. But they contract with like, um, home mortgage companies and that kind of thing to do closings. At people's residences, I've done that before and. So, yeah, that would be my.
Mark between five and twenty-five dollars.
What?
Yeah, that's a lot of money. We don't even charge that much for a dog license. I can't imagine doing that for notarizing. That's crazy. Wow.
Uh, okay. Anybody got anything else to? I have one little thing and that was about the, uh, Boys and Girls Club. They would like to. Since the chamber. Lost its member Tony, who was doing our. Doing the lights at the Wayside Rest that glow in the snow. And the Boys and Girls Club would like to. Hang a few of those lights at the Wayside Rest. I said I didn't think that there would be any problem with it, but. It would be their staff.
Not, not the boys and girls?
Not the children themselves.
Are they gonna take them down?
That was also part of my conversation with.
Because there's still lights up from last year unless those came down.
Unless you just plug them right in.
If they work. You've been rained on for a year.
I can remember snowflakes not making it down until, yeah, June, July.
I won't let that happen anymore.
There are a bunch of snowflakes with some burnt out holes.
That's just the perspective of the way you're looking at those LEDs. They're not burned out.
Wind shifts on the little, makes it twinkle.
Yep.
You know, I, does, uh, do, you know, and I, I would say. You know, if they, if you want them to come up to the council meetings beforehand, then December eighth would be the.
I don't see why they need to come to city hall to ask for that. If, if. They wanna do it, I think that that's fine and I would encourage the festiveness, you know, of it, but.
You know, in the spirit of the season, exactly, and, and for them, I don't think, and I told them, I said, you're not gonna get a, you don't have time to plan an event. That's, that's, you, you don't. You don't have that kind of time, but if you'd like to put up some lights before Christmas and let kids can. Take a look at or see that are lit up, you know, then. Then find this year, if you want, if they want to take over the glow and snow. Thing and have an event with sleigh rides and cocoa and all the other stuff. I wouldn't. As the chamber president, I told them it'd be more, I'd be more than happy to allow them to do it and they can. Take that over. And I think they would have, I think that they would have a better. Better access to volunteers and. Some resources for, for that.
Well, if you talk to them, they're like three totes of lights.
I have. All of those lights sitting in my shed right there.
Oh, that we're taking down?
Yes, and I'm really. I, I would love to have a spot for them to go. But I will.
So they're not in the tourist information booth anywhere? They're, they're at your place?
Yes, they are.
You're gonna be a four foot by four foot star, I mean, or wooden lined with lights and painted it.
You're not, you're not going all out this year?
You haven't been by my house lately? They've been on for two weeks and. Then with the permanent ones, this is.
Oh, I see.
You're so festive.
You know which ones I'm talking about? You've probably seen ads.
No. Okay, I'm gonna drive by your house on.
They stay up under the eve, they're hundred percent waterproof, you can have ten thousand different colors, you can have. It comes with themes for every holiday.
So you can like, they're like the little LED ones that you can change with the remote?
Each little thing has four lights. It, it'll chase each other around the house if I want to give a wave.
So Clark. When you're up there on the roof.
Make sure you have a safety harness on.
I will, uh, I'll have to, I'll have to take a spin by. Do you know how often you change the lights?
No, correct.
If you like it, so keep people guessing.
That's cute.
So if, now, this is, you know, maybe a little off topic, but if the chamber were to start a holiday lighting contest. You'd be interested?
I probably would.
Maybe that's what we should be doing and not decorating the Wayside Rest. That way everybody's responsible for their own lights.
That's where everybody's responsible for their own lights. So I was just, I was just thinking that it could work out that way. It's something to consider for next year, obviously. Uh, anything else?
Nick's got the heads up. He's gonna be all over it. I'm doing it in July.
Doors open out of my backyard.
That's awesome.
And the sleigh comes up. That's good. All right.
Well, thank you.
All those in favor? All right, external adjourn, I thank you. Yeah, could be like, uh, you know, like a, like a missile silo. Yeah, just saying, it comes right up out of there, zoomed off, right?
I've always wanted to, uh, like, you put the Christmas tree in the front window.